Okay, so let's start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance.
Ben and Owen Laurie would like to lead us in the pledge.
Okay, Ben and Owen Laurie are going to lead us in the pledge. They are here with the Boy Scouts to watch a public meeting. Go ahead, guys, whenever you're ready.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Before starting with public audience, I just want to acknowledge that Lisa's not going to be here this evening. She actually is participating in a ceremony on behalf of an award that a town employee is receiving. I'll make reference to it later on in the first selectman's report. So with that said, do we have any people interested in a public audience? Joan, come on up.
(inaudible) wait, don't do it until I get up.
I won't, I won't chip you of one second.
(laughing) Joan Coe, 26 Witcombe Drive. I would like to thank all the 6,358 voters that participated in the historic vote to have a professional town manager as the CEO of Simsbury. I would also like to thank the seven charter revision commissioners for standing their ground under much pressure to vote for a precedent-setting charter with a town manager. Past first selectman Peggy Shanks, Anita Millard, and Mary Glassman all publicly supported a town manager. Thanks also go to the four members of the Board of Selectmen who voted to forward the charter for a referendum vote. Thanks go to SCTV who televise the charter revision commissions and discussion on the referendum questions to educate the public. I would also like to thank the 100 residents who voted for me when I ran for first selectman with the platform of town manager. Now that we have a charter with a town manager, the selection of the right person for a town manager is paramount to the process. The town should look to the town manager's association, ICMA, for qualified candidates to fill the position. We should have a selection committee including the town managers of Avon and Bloomfield. The town manager form of government for Simsbury has finally evolved into a positive vote after over 30 years. It is imperative that the selection process be devoid of political persuasion in favor of the most qualified and experienced person for the position. At the last Board of Selectmen meeting, there was discussion about renovating Eno Hall for additional services in the senior center. Now that this decision has been made, it is time to move SCTV from Eno Hall to the library basement. This move could create a community media center. This is no-brainer. It is available immediately. The entire infrastructure is in place, and it will be an extension of the services offered in the library that has morphed into a community center. SCTV now occupies 1,600 square feet, and the library has 2,900 square feet that could be shared space. While the town is moving forward on renovation of Eno Hall, it would be cost-effective if all the changes were done at the same time. I would suggest that the Board of Selectmen change the public building committee, change the charge, the public committee to formulate a plan for this proposal. Although we were told that the police department did not have any grievances, which were one of the talking points, to give chief and captain a 5% increase in salary, recently a grievance was filed by the police union. The issue was the computed amount received in the pension when a police officer retires. The police commission denied the grievance, and now the police union will once again go to arbitration to argue over the retirees' pension calculation. Absent wording for the exact computation rightfully, the previous contract should take precedence. Why is there a need for arbitration at great cost to the town and the police union? I am very concerned about the reasoning behind the resignation of Bruce Elliott as an elected alternate of the zoning commission. It appears that Jamie Rabbit, town planner, has told the elected alternates that they can no longer participate in any discussions brought before the zoning commission. Why did we elect these people when they have no right to participate? Past practice has always been the elected alternates can participate in the discussion but could not vote. Why the change? Why dilute the process? It appears that over the years, the elected and appointed officials on the land use commission have been given less authority, leading one to believe that the fast track is broken. The design review committee with expert contributors was assigned to a lesser position with many contributors resigning. If we expect professional people to volunteer for our land use boards and commissions, we should give them the authority to make decisions in the best interest of the town. With all this building in town that will lead to a bubble and bust, we should have more people reviewing our applications, not fewer. I would suggest that this letter of resignation be reviewed and policy changes be implemented. I would also like to report that Simsbury Farms once again has an eight paddle team. We practice on Tuesday mornings and play matches on Thursday morning. We could use more players if anyone is interested. And I would also like to report that I'm undefeated, winning my matches against Farmington Field Club and Hop Meadow Country Club. And all of my comments will be posted on Simsbury Pass Twitter at Joan Coe, News Feed on Facebook, and Simsbury Forum Topics. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Coe. Anyone else would like to speak? Robert Kallishman, and then we'll go to the back of the room.
I'd like to take this time to offer my congratulations to Donald Trump, the newly-elected president of the United States. And I feel a little badly about Mr. Don's loss. I feel that she's, that the Republican Party in town here is being remiss in their duties. And surely, in the events, that she should have walked away with the election. But I truly convey my, yes, my condolences to her because she was a far, she was head and shoulders above who we have now. And that seems to be one of the difficulties that we have with the Republicans that sit on this board. In my opinion, you're here for your own self-engri, for your own self-grandizement. That's all you're here for. You're here for what you can do for yourselves or your companies. And you're not doing anything to help anybody because certainly, after two, two times out of the gate, you can't take the House of Representatives for your own party? People wouldn't go out and help this woman? You gotta get, you gotta get in, get out of the wagon and start pulling the wagon. And having said that, another thing that was brought to my attention this evening, Bruce Elliott. Bruce Elliott is a veteran. And I look at, and in addition to being a veteran, he's in, he was elected by the town of Simsbury. It's not an appointment, it's an election. And for you to sit here and this evening, accept that appointment based on, and based on, and accept that resignation based on the appointed person that was appointed, that's an appointee, that's not an elected official. You have an appointee telling the elected people, "You can't run your government, I'm going to run it for you." We don't need that kind of, that help in Simsbury. The people elected this man, and you should stand, you should stand behind him and straighten out whatever's coming out of that, that zoning official. He's an appointee, Mr. Elliott is a, an elected official. And let's see some metal, finally. And, and in closing, I'd like to call your attention to the monument down here, which was accepted by the town to be maintained and looked after. And I'll leave you with the poem from World War I, that the ending or this last stanza is read something to this. "If ye break faith with us who die, we will not sleep in Flanders Field." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kallishman. Next. Yep, please come on up, and then Mark, you can go. We just asked that you give your name and address, thank you.
Yep, Rick Anderson, Woodhaven in Simsbury. I'm glad to hear about the SCTV thing, that's not why I'm here, but it is complimentary to what I just wanted to call your attention to. I'm from Simsbury Theater Guild. We are in the midst right now of a run of Beauty and the Beast. It's a fantastic production. There's a lot of Beauty and the Beast renditions going on in the area, but you can't miss on this one. In all due respect to the seriousness of the order of the business of the evening, one of the things we would really like to have is support for the arts in this town, and Simsbury Theater Guild is right in the thick of it right now. Fantastic music, fantastic dancing, excellent acting. I might know something about that part. And we're having three performances this weekend, Saturday a doubleheader at 2:00 and at 7:30. And on Sunday, we close up at 2:00 again. Simsbury High School, tickets are at the door, plenty of room. The high school is very large, and it's a challenge for us to fill, and that's why we're kind of here to just promote and, and push people's attention to it. So we thank you for your time and hope you'll be there to see a great show.
Thank you. Mark?
Hi, my name is Mark Warrenstein from 82 Old Meadow Plain Road. And tonight, I'm here on behalf of Simsbury Community TV, AKA SCTV. Earlier this year, we received wonderful news from the Hartford Foundation for Giving. We had applied for a grant to, to come up to the modern world, to go digital, to go to high-definition, to upgrade our video capabilities for both the studio and for the main meeting room and for the Board of Ed meeting room upstairs. It was a $35,000 matching grant, so every dollar you give is matched by the Hartford Foundation for Giving. We've completed the upgrades to the studio, it's now high-definition, it's in the digital age. Lots of work and energy has gone into it, and it's working out great. The next step, Woody, if you can show one of these old security cameras that we're using for videos here.
Ten years old.
Is to replace the three cameras in this room with high-def robotic video cameras. Same thing upstairs in the Board of Ed room, as well as upstairs, all of the monitoring equipment, recording equipment on that. So we're in the final stages of raising money. Remember, every dollar you give gets matched, so let's go ahead, let's meet our goal, let's raise the $35,000 and get these rooms upgraded as well. Thanks a lot. Bye-bye.
Mark, thank you very much.
By the way, you can also donate on simsburytv.org.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in public audience would like to speak? With that said, let's move on to presentations. We have two presentations tonight. The first is recognition and a proclamation relative to National Bone Marrow Awareness Month. Going to ask Alan Brant to come up and come up to the microphone. Alan, I don't know if you want to do just a very brief update on this before we do the proclamation?
Yeah, well, unfortunately, my son, who was the one that was responsible for donating bone marrow to, as it ultimately turned out, an 18-year-old boy in York, Pennsylvania, who had leukemia. And anyways, Dave, who was a resident of Simsbury, donated the bone marrow, and it was to Brandon Hohenadel, out of, like I said, York, Pennsylvania. And we had decided to use this situation as a way to bring attention to how easy it is for people to actually donate bone marrow, which is just, well, Sean's done it, so, you know, it's just a swab in, in your mouth, and that's it, you send it off, and you got a 1 in 500 chance of being selected. My son was fortunate enough to do that. Also, unfortunately, Brandon passed away like three weeks ago, so when we were doing this, we, you know, we thought everything was going to be fine. And what this really, I think, teaches us is that every day that we wake up on this side of the grass is a blessing. And, boy, if there was anybody that showed the, you know, that, that kind of sentiment was, was Brandon, the fact that, you know, he got another two and a half years of life and a shot to, you know, possibly make it as a result of the bone marrow registry. So, like I said, we're just trying to promote the bone marrow, and, you know, for what's worth, it's bethematch.org, so it's www.bethematch.org. And the people that they really try to target are people that are from 18 to 20, 18 to 45, so.
Thanks. Alan, just before Sean reads a proclamation, we all were just so impressed with the presentation that you and your son did previously, are incredibly impressed with what he's done on behalf of the larger community. Really sorry to hear about Brandon. Please let him know that we, you know, made a specific statement of appreciation for him tonight. We felt it was appropriate for Sean to read the actual proclamation.
As a matter of fact, Brandon's parents are coming up to Simsbury this weekend, so we're planning on giving, giving them the proclamation.
Okay.
So I've got a proclamation from the town of Simsbury. Whereas November 2016 marks the anniversary of the National Bone Marrow Awareness Month, and whereas Be The Match is an organization that has a mission of delivering cures for blood cancer patients by getting life-saving bone marrow from donors, and whereas in 2014, Simsbury High School graduate David Brant donated bone marrow after being notified by Be The Match that he was a match of, of then, of a then anonymous patient in desperate need, and whereas the recipient was Brandon Hohenadel of York, Pennsylvania, who in 2013 was diagnosed with AML leukemia in his senior year of high school. Whereas in March of 2014, Brandon receives David's bone marrow. And whereas this proclamation is being, is, is to bring more attention to Simsbury for Be The Match and Bone Marrow Awareness Month to increase the numbers of donors, to save more lives like Brandon's. Now therefore be, now therefore let it be known, I, Lisa L. Hebner, first selectman of the town of Simsbury, do hereby proclaim November 2016 as National Bone Marrow Awareness Month. And witness thereof, I have placed my seal on the great seal of the town of Simsbury, dated the 14th day of November 2016.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. We also have a presentation by Mary Turner on an annual recycling award.
Mary Turner, 11 Barnard Drive, Chairman of the Simsbury Recycling Committee. Since 1966, the George Hall Farm has provided our local community with locally grown, high-quality organic and naturally grown produce. The farm became certified organic in 1979 and is certain, currently certified by Bay State Organic Certifiers of Massachusetts. The farm has incorporated composting to improve soil fertility while maintaining a sustainable, organic, and environmentally friendly method of agriculture. The farm is committed to expanding its use to compost and mulching techniques to improve the viability of the farm using locally available biomaterials. The farm offers community-supported agriculture shares, a farm stand on the property, produce at many local farmers markets, and eggs and honey. Also offered are working farming internships, tours, and instruction for school, for local school groups, and workshops for local residents. The Hall family has had a long history of farming in Simsbury. Farmer Darren Hall is continuing this tradition of a family-owned and operated certified organic farm serving our community. It is my pleasure to announce that the recycling committee has voted unanimously to present Simsbury Annual Recycling Award to the George Hall Farm as managed by Darren Hall. Unfortunately, Darren has, was unable to attend, and Ashley Lane is here to accept on his behalf. Ashley?
All right. I accept this on behalf of Darren Hall and all the Hall family members that are operating the farm in a sustainable and, a sustainable way.
All right. Ashley, thank you, Mary, thank you. Thank you, Mary. All right, with that, we will go on to first selectman's report. The first selectman for every meeting puts together a fairly extensive list of updates of activities that are going on in town. That is available on the website. I'm going to take more than two minutes to provide an overview of some of the key things that I saw. The first thing I do want to acknowledge is the reason that Mary, that Lisa's not here tonight, as well as Tom Roy not being available, is they are at an awards ceremony with CCM, for Tom receiving the Richard C. Lee Innovations Award. This is a significant award given by CCM. The Richard C. Lee Innovators Award is an individual award for municipal leaders who have developed unique and creative projects and programs to increase the effectiveness of local government. So please, when you see Tom Roy, congratulate him for that. We're very proud to have a staff member of the town of Simsbury receiving this award. Another update that I'd like to actually ask Cheryl to give is there is a Community for Care presentation that's coming up tomorrow evening.
Thank you, Chris. Tomorrow night at the library in the main program room, the Community for Care will present a program entitled Talk Saves Lives: An Introduction to Suicide Prevention. The presentation will be given by a Simsbury resident, Thomas Steen. He is the executive director of the Capital Area Substance Abuse Council. We hope that the public will find this program informative. We are going to have a lot of information regarding signs, symptoms, and what a, the average community member can do to respond in a situation where there might be a, a crisis. So we hope that you will be able to make it tomorrow night at the library at 6:30 PM. If you have any questions, you can call Simsbury Social Services at 860-658-3283, or you can send an email to me through the town website.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thanks.
One of the events that Lisa in particular wanted to make sure that we highlighted and appreciation of was, many of us had an opportunity to be at the Veterans Memorial opening yesterday. We want to in particular thank all of the individuals that participated in making that memorial happen, and also appreciate all the members of the community who came. There were, I think, counted about 800 individuals that participated. And the ceremony is a culmination really of a five-year effort by local veterans, as well as Terry Han of Landscape Architectural Design Associates. The memorial honors 98 individuals who have passed in service since the Revolutionary War in Simsbury, as well as other living veterans. And if you haven't had a chance to get over there, please do so. Couple other things I want to do is just welcome a new employee to the town, Adam Kessler, a project engineer. Adam is coming to the engineering depart, department as the new project engineer. He's a professional engineer with over 10 years of consulting experience in land development, including site design, stormwater management, and permitting construction and inspection. And again, there's a whole host of other critical updates that you can see on the website if you want to check them out. So with that said, let's move to our first item of action, which is the approval of the fiscal year 16 Board of Selectmen general fund budget transfer. And Sean is here to speak to us. What we in essence have tonight is the need for two motions. One is for us to approve our intra-departmental transfers, which per the charter, we are accountable for. And then the second, after Sean's review, is to approve the interdepartmental transfers, which are actually, we're approving a recommendation to the Board of Finance. So with that said, Sean, if you want to take it over?
Sure, thank you, Chris. As Chris was saying, what you have before you are, I should say, first and foremost, as we presented, I believe, about six weeks ago, we gave you sort of an update on where fiscal 16 was closing out, everything's tracking, and tracked where we expected it. And again, the good news, on the expenditure side, we're favorable, $64,593, so that means under budget on the expenditure side. And again, as a reminder, on the revenue side, we were favorable about 1 point, just under $1.4 million, so all in all, we're good here. What you have for you, and this is the same format that's been used for the last couple of years, listing out of all of the line items, as Chris was saying, ultimately, the intradepartment transfers are what clean up individual departments, any individual line item that's been overspent, to balance it off with any favorable line items within that department. To the extent not available, transfers between departments are authorized through the charter with Board of Finance approval. And so the summary on the last page of your attachment will show the interdepartment transfers. Again, these are summing up from all the sort of multicolored sheets you have before you, and the ins and outs, and then ultimately, as you'll see, I've included a line this year that just shows the amount returned to fund balance. That doesn't actually take an action, that would happen sort of either way, but that's just a good way to sort of account. So, and then the total there is $157,000 worth of interdepartment transfers, and compared to the prior year, we're more on budget than last year in terms of that, in terms of, $157,000 this year as compared to about $369,000. Any questions?
Any questions for Sean?
I don't hear anyone looking at me. I'm good.
Yep, that's good. Thanks, Sean.
All right, so with that said, we need two motions. One is a general approval of the interdepartmental transfers as recommended by the Director of Finance, Treasurer.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All who approve, say yes.
Aye.
Any against, say nay, so carries. The second motion we need is a recommendation consistent with the recommendations of the Director of Finance tonight to the Board of Finance for the interdepartmental transfers.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All who approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? The motion so carries. Thank you, Sean. Appreciate all of your work and effort on this.
Thank you, Sean.
Very well presented. The next agenda item is authorizing the first selectwoman to execute a dial-a-ride, I'm sorry, we have the tax refunds.
We can skip those, but Kelly will come in here.
So I need a motion to approve tax refunds in the amount of $3,823.73.
So moved.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All who approve, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? So carries. Thank you. Now we're on to the authorize the first selectwoman to execute the dial-a-ride operating assistant grant contract with the Greater Hartford Transit District in the amount of $6,517. Any questions on this?
Is this managed by Social Services?
It is, yes.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, that's the one I was thinking of.
Any other questions? All right. I just need a motion to authorize the first selectman to sign the operating assistant grant contract between the Greater Hartford Transit District and the town of Simsbury in the amount of $6,517.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All who approve, say yes.
Aye.
Any against? So carries. Now we are on to other business, appointments and resignations. We have submitted to us, acknowledged a resignation of Bruce H. Elliott as an alternate member of the zoning commission effective November 20th, 2016. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Just a clarifying question, Chris. We acknowledge resignations, but we can't stop them.
That is correct.
Correct. We are just, we are just, as we've done in the past, we can acknowledge them, so.
Right.
Yeah. Acknowledge them with our thanks. Yes.
Of course.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
No.
All who approve, say yes.
Yes.
Any against? So carries. The next is appoint Joe Buddha as a regular member of the Tourism Committee with an expiration date of December 4th, 2017. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All who approve, say yes.
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 Any against? So moved. And we have review of minutes. Any questions, comments, suggested edits to our minutes? I'll take that as a no. And so with that, we'll move on to selectman liaison and subcommittee reports. Anyone have any subcommittee updates that they'd like to do? Anyone have any Subcommittee updates that they'd like to do?
Just a brief one from Public Building did take up our charge from the last meeting regarding the new, so-called new, plan, and they have referred it out to an architect who specializes in the renovation of historical buildings, so we are looking forward to hearing his recommendations. And, you know, he is currently working with the State Historical Society on a couple of other buildings in the state, so we are hopeful that with his experience and knowledge, he'll be able to, to guide us through this, this process that we're starting.
Thank you.
I'll add, from tourism, everybody knows Thanksgiving is soon upon us and will occur before our next meeting, which includes Simsbury Celebrates, of course, but also the beginning of holiday shopping. Main Street is yet again doing a big initiative with local small businesses, and of course, sorry, Simsbury Celebrates will be opening and including new features this year, including a European-style holiday market at the Historical Society.
And Simsbury Celebrates, the actual dates, Elaine, we should...
Are...
We have them right here. They are...
They are Saturday after Thanksgiving, and I'm...
I believe it's the 26th.
It is.
Yeah, it is.
Saturday, November 26.
It is, so...
So it's a great event, so please...
Great fun, and Small Business Saturday will be on the 26th as well, but the Black Friday event that Main Street is sponsoring is part of making Small Business Saturday a two-day event, because we have so many great small businesses, so...
Absolutely. Anything else, Elaine?
Nope, that's all I've got.
I have one, Chris. The Clean Energy Task Force met, we've given them, for lack of a better term, a charge to look at the streetlights, which the town is in the process of purchasing, and they're come back with a recommendation of recommending that we use 3,000-watt LED lights for the purchase, and it's supposed to happen sometime this month, but they're kind of coordinating with CLMP or Eversource to buy the streetlights and manage that process, which will ultimately be a good thing for the town on many levels, both safety-wise with brighter lights and more focused light down, so less nightlight, so to speak.
All right.
Very good.
Thank you. Anything else?
We have our annual event of tri-board meeting tomorrow, right? So from the Board of Finance side, so there'll be more to update everybody on after we get our guidance officially from the Board of Finance, as we enter my favorite time of year, budget season. There'll be more of an update after that, but just, again, if folks are interested, that'll be at the library as well, I believe.
Right.
No, it's here at the Board of Ed.
Right, excuse me. I was gonna say, oh, I have Board of Ed room on my calendar.
Yeah, we'll be here for that one.
All right. With that, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
There we are. Thank you.
Somebody text Lisa.
You got a big pat on back for that one. Because I had my meeting scheduled first.